Georgia, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we've asked the town historian to come in. She gave us an annual report, as she does every year. I thought rather than just have a paper annual report, it would be much nicer to have you come in and talk to us.
Thank you for inviting me, and happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
No, didn't wear a coat today.
I thought it would be interesting to do a show and tell. I know that you've all been over to my office at one time or another, but it'd be a good idea to let you know. Let me start with the file cabinets. I have vertical files in them, and everything is indexed. And these are my two indexes. One is by drawer, the other is by alphabet, under topics. And in those files, you will see something like pickles and cauliflower.
Pickles and cauliflower.
Which is important.
Pickles, it is.
Very important.
What drawer is pickles and cauliflower in?
That's it.
That's the top drawer on the left.
Remember, they used to.
They can here in the village.
Right on Mill Road and 58.
Did they? When did they stop doing that?
And they canned along railroad tracks between Maple Avenue and Union Avenue.
Yep, and they pickled on the Mill Road.
Here is a folder on East Lawn.
Yeah, that's, uh... That's on for discussion today. We're hoping to get it restored to its former grandeur.
And this is the folder on the town halls that have been...
How many town halls have we had?
I think four. Because one was floating back in 1792.
Were you alienated? We had the Isad Building was... Weren't we in the Isad Building for a little while?
Well, we were in our private home, the riverfront home.
The riverfront, the private home.
We sorted out.
Right.
And it was there for a while, then we were on Main Street. We were in Oddfellows Hall.
Oddfellows, that's it. I want to say the Isad. Oh, that's the... Sure, Oddfellows.
Yeah, that's it.
And after my Civil War book came out, I received a phone call from a gentleman who said I would like to donate two Civil War letters. And these are the two Civil War letters.
Holy Moses.
From Albert Terry. One is dated 1864, and the other is dated 1863. And they have two numbers on them. One number is called an accession number, which tells me the year it was donated and who donated it. And the other number is the indexed number.
It's amazing that people keep letters like this.
Yes. I'll take everyone that I can find.
Keep your time, that's it. It's amazing.
And this man was from Patch Oak, and he happened to see the article in Newsday.
I now have the pleasure of answering your kind letter, which I received on the 16th. And I am sorry to say that I have not had the opportunity to answer it until now. One reason is that, wow, you really can read this. A lot of the old stuff...
It's difficult.
Very difficult. This gentleman's penmanship is excellent. It's so good.
Well, maybe it'll look this way, probably.
Yeah. I couldn't write this well.
And as a result of the Civil War book this past year, I had three speaking engagements. And I'm always delighted to go and speak to anyone. I have the Civil War that I can speak about. I have three plays, one woman plays that I've done on my great-grandmother, who lived on Main Street and East Avenue. And what, if you remember, this is what it did.
You're not going to make me do a play when we do what you're going to announce, are you? I don't have to dress up, do I?
You have to grow a mustache if you're going to play my great-grandfather.
I have... I don't have a problem. My wife gets mad though.
Jimmy, you should have old stuff, your family's.
I have to dig it out.
You've got to dig it up.
Dig it up or dig it out?
Dig it out.
Yeah.
Dig it up, dig it out.
And I want to tell you about a gentleman here in Riverhead, E.J. Coleman. He's a reenactor with the 88th New York State Volunteer Irish Brigade who reenacts the Civil War. And E.J. has been researching the burial sites of a lot of the soldiers. And he has done them all in Riverhead Cemetery. And now he's in the process of working on others who may be buried in national cemeteries in the South and other cemeteries here in the town of Riverhead and on Long Island. And I can't tell you how many hours he has spent doing this, because I know that when I researched some of these, it has been difficult. And he's really done a fantastic job. And at some point, I would like to see the town board recognize his efforts to find these Civil War graves.
Absolutely. Us know what you want to do, and we will oblige.
And this is one reason we have to find you a secure place instead of the East Lawn House, because these papers are very valuable.
They are.
And we want to put them in someplace where, in case something happens, they can't get destroyed.
Right.
So we have to look for a secure location and a good location for you.
And when something comes in, such as the Brumman Memorial Park... I went to Toronto to pick it up from the man, John Peruso, and he gave me four boxes of things that he had, not only from the park, but from Brumman. And he was one of the directors. And this is a sample of what I fill out every time I get an accession. And this is a sample of Riverhead Town School documents. And they come to me all wrapped up.
Oh, these are old, too.
These are...
Yeah, don't touch her. That's why she's putting gloves on here.
She's putting gloves on, yeah.
This one is from 1827.
1827.
But they come all wrapped up. You can see how they've increased. And so far, I've opened these up. And what I do after that is I number them so that I can index them. And I have copied, not the school ones, but all the town records, I can copy and work for work. This just gets too cumbersome.
You've been hand copying or zero copying?
Typing them into my best paper.
So people and we have...
Right. And I don't have to handle these on tape. I just look on my computer.
Wow. That's a lot of work.
At some point, I would like all of these digitized so that we don't have to pull these and they can be secured.
Is there any possibility that might go a little more... This one doesn't work anymore. This one doesn't work anymore. I'm sure the residents appreciate it when you do that on TV.
Yes.
Sorry, residents. Are there any school, historical schools, that maybe an intern might want to work with you? Because it seems like if we had an intern that could help you catalog and digitize this, it would be helpful.
It would. It would.
If you can reach out to anybody that might be willing to send an intern that's interested in history, I think the board would be inclined to support that.
I can give you the name of somebody that I was working with that submitted community college that actually helped us with the National Registry downtown.
But we have to support you, too, because you put in dedicated hours to this.
Yes, I volunteer a lot of hours.
You volunteer a lot of hours.
That's right. See? So I gotta say, you know, you are a dedicated volunteer and worker.
Well, I also want to point out, this white paper is called Pernal Life. It's a special acid-free paper that has pictures burst between each document. So I...
How much does that do?
It helps preserve the life of the paper.
Yeah, it doesn't draw the...
Now, if anybody would like to...
And you put gloves on because of the oil on your fingers.
The oils on my hands don't go on there. They are going to help destroy it. I don't know if anybody would like to look at them.
Do you like to look at them?
No, I know. They look too fine for me. I read one of those letters.
In 1898, we grew 1,300,000 pickles.
Did you really?
I read that in the...
Cucumbers.
Cucumbers became a disorder.
You went to good turn that in the morning.
1,300,000. That's interesting.
When did they win?
Fifty-four years ago.
I've never known for cucumbers.
How long they grow?
If you look it up, 1,300,000 cucumbers were grown in 1898. It was a good year, they said. Even the poor soil was producing good crops.
Wow.
I have some pictures of my office. If you haven't been there in a while, you'll see. These are my books.
Yep, that's our office.
It is.
What a mess. We have to get you a better office.
Yeah.
It's too small.
She has to move everything around in order to access file drawers.
Holy Moses.
And this picture...
Moses isn't there, too. Yeah, Moses isn't there.
...of Riverhead Savings Bank records.
Yeah. Can you fit this with all those documents around you?
Barely.
And she scans around spot on.
I need to find things, and that's my big problem. I have no place to put them.
And she has all these beautiful display boards that she can't display.
That's why we love to put you down to secondary firehouse, right, Jimmy?
I've been working on a book, which I've decided I want to do in book form. And this is a sample. I'm still trying to work with an editor for free who can edit what I've written. But this is sort of a sampling of what I have. This one is called Act C.
We know Sal Mastropole, he loves to edit our work. Maybe he'd be willing to do yours.
And this one is about businesses, utilities.
Should have edited what was...
Okay, sorry.
These are... No, it's a nice...
Well, I would like to get them published, and I would like you to consider doing them in-house so that they could be... And there will be about 15. I'm going to try and combine some of the topics, but others are kind of long and therefore need their own separate book.
So the Rexo wrote, read speech where... I kind of figured that they were purposely grounded. They did that in four chapters, too.
And that's the question that I ask the most.
How are the sales of the supervisor book? Do people still buy them and...
Many people brought that up, yes.
Refundishing them and...
If something could be put on our website that says they are available for sale from the town board from my office...
Jill, can you just ask Carol to...
Yeah.
Let me do that. So you have a... Do you still have a supply, then?
Yes. But if we do this in-house, then it could be on-demand. You know, we could have a certain number printed up, and then as that goes, we could print new. And if you're interested, I belong to the Association of Public Historians of New York State, and that's their latest newsletter came yesterday. And this is for Sean.
It's this real interesting.
I thought he might like to see that.
No.
This is just a sample, and that's the title of the book. And I have a...
You've got to put down 2010 forward open meetings with prayer.
No, this is just up to 1880.
When did they stop doing that? Do you know? That long ago? We stopped opening town board meetings in 1867 with prayer?
Yes.
Oh, Lord, have mercy. We'll fix that.
I have something...
Non-denominational, volunteer. That's amazing. I would have thought that that would have carried on for, you know, into at least the 50s. Why did they just have one reverend, one pastor, just do everything? Well, we like to mix it up.
And I have two booklets from 1876 about Riverhead. I only have two of them. So maybe you can all share.
Yep.
I don't even want to open this because it feels like the binding...
They're brand-new, yes.
Oh, this is brand-new? I wasn't sure.
That it's old, but they're brand-new. The bank had a lot of them printed up. That's about the Riverhead Savings Bank buying for the people. And if you decide that you do not want to keep them, once you put them over, if you would return them to me, I don't want to have them...
No.
Just put in the wastewaste. Do you have any questions? Maybe I can answer.
If anybody wants to look at these, how can they get in contact with you?
They can come to my office Wednesday, so I'm there from 9:00 to 3:00 at East Lawn on East Main Street. You'll probably find me there on a Monday morning or Friday morning as well.
If anybody wants to look at history, you should contact a town historian and make him come up and visit her, and she will give you a tour of her office and all the stuff that she has available to show you.
Let me ask you.
Then you can call... They can call by going through our switchboard here.
No.
No? Do you have an outside line?
I have an outside line.
Can you give us the telephone number, please? 369-9717.
And you can reach me online through the town website.
And I can say that if I do an appointment to meet with you, you came in on a Monday class.
On the holiday.
Because she was doing research paper, wanted to do the story.
What's your special? Well, I'd...
Georgette would do that.
Well, Tim knows. He reaches me at all.
Call Georgette and let her...
Peter knows.
And some of our new members of town of Riverhead might want to know the history of the town. So it's a good idea to call and make an appointment and go up and down. And look over his letters and the facts that he has written for town of Riverhead.
Let's... One of the questions... One of the things that are going to be talked about today is the sale of East Lawn Building. We know Councilman Wooton's been an advocate for you to move to the firehouse, which could be permanent, maybe not permanent. I don't know that move ready to pass judgment on that yet. I guess a lot depends on parking and other things. But if we would have put you... Would it be acceptable to be in the meeting room in the firehouse? I guess it was the commissioner's office with, you know, on the first floor.
The commissioner's office has a walk-in safe, which would be fantastic to put my documents that start in the late 1700s.
So that would be an acceptable move? If... Maybe permanent, maybe not, but that would be an acceptable move?
Yeah, but my only concern is that once we move, I like to do lots, do it right.
I know, but I... You know, it's hard for us to know everything.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but once she gets those documents in the safe, is that movable, let's say? Will we can take a forklift and move it? Or it's permanent?
No, it's permanent.
That's permanent, okay.
Is the commissioner's office large enough?
No.
Probably.
I would need one of the apparatus floors, not all of it, but a portion of it. And the Historical Society has said that they would loan items and furniture to be on display at my office.
Instead of a smaller bit museum, which is nice.
Well, I think that's probably... I can't think of any other place that there that we would be able to house the human...
And you would be much of the apparatus floor. You don't have used the one on the west side, which has not been interfered with. It's external storage. We have a police office.
Yeah, on the Rexo, on the east side. That ad should be a historical building. That building was built 1935, I think, the original built firehouse stand.
I used to be able to tell you.
That's... I think it was 1935 it was built. So that would be a historical building that should be in, too.
I would say that that's probably a safe bet, that that's going to be the move. But again, I don't know whether it's permanent or not. There's so many different things that may factor into it, but at least my goal is to get the Corwin House in private hands so somebody can renovate it and put it back to what it belongs. Not...
The church. There we are.
East Lawn?
East Lawn. Was that Corwin?
Corwin. Robert Corwin was the supervisor. He built the place about 1855, and he stayed in the family until marrying Terry.
Corwin Terry House. Corwin Terry House. I mean, I think that the goal is going to be that, to sell it, and hopefully somebody will buy it and renovate it. I'm sure it'll be offices, but renovate it back to what it should be.
It's a lovely home. It has a beautiful fireplace that's not usable, but I do not feel safe in the building in that there's a sprinkler system or anything that would protect the documents. And some of the documents are, you know, are sitting on the floor. If we have one of the pipes burst, you know, I just don't have room anymore.
I don't think it's safe... I mean, I don't think it's sprinklered in the commissioner's office either, but...
No, but at least a cement block.
A little bit better building. All right, well, thank you very much.
You're the best.
Okay, we had a bunch of different segments. All right, the next thing, Henry Prandey. Well, we might as well start with East Lawn first since we started that, and then go to Code... Well, you can come up with it.
Well, you know what? We had a wedding...
Oh, you want to do that? All right, let's do Code then. Well, okay. Okay, that's fine.
Amy.
You've got to change your mind by now.
So we got the appraisal back on East Lawn, and...
That much? I don't know if we want to share that number.
Exactly.
Whisper it to you later.
Well, so my feeling was, if the town board made a decision to sell the building, offered for sale, that I would do the requisite resolutions for an auction to get the highest price possible.
You want to do a sealed bid auction? No live... No... If the town wanted to reject all bids, we...
I would include that as a...
Yeah, you can show the appraisal. Just don't announce the number, please. Just a bit... Who's the package? I wouldn't figure that out. Anyway. Come on. I think the historical... I saw it. I'm sorry. I think...
With it.
I think the goal of Richard Wyans's group would be that the building be renovated. And I know that's not necessarily going to bring the best price, but I think it's important.
Well, Councilman Giglio, I had mentioned quite some time ago when we met with the appraisal on this property, that you wanted a condition that it should be refurbished pursuant to the architectural and report specifications. I don't know if the town board wants that in the public auction criteria or not.
I wouldn't do the ARB. I would do Richard Wyans's...
I mean, landmarks. I'm sorry, landmarks.
I don't know if I would go that far, but I was... I think that it should be refurbished. I mean, I think the language...
And if that's the raised value without any renovations or refurbishing, then we may have to discount that price, because I think to scrape the lead paint off was like 60,000 dollars of expense.
Oh, no lead paint in that building, right? No?
So... And the windows are all out of plum and, you know, the doors. It's going to require significant work, but it is a fascinating building. And I had also said that the town board would support that building being put on the National Registry. If I could just finish. That you could put it on the National Registry so that they would be eligible for 40% tax credits for any work that they did. So they would actually get that right, or 40% on their income tax.
Would we put that in the bid?
Well, that's why I think the supervisor's idea of sealed bid is a good one, because...
That was my idea.
Well, so I can fashion it and put in some of that criteria, have the town board review it before I put it out.
And that the town board would support the building being put into the National Registry.
Problem I see. And renovating it is great, but there's no parking there.
Street.
No, there is no parking spaces.
Three spots. Three spots. And a street. Oh, a street park.
You can do it. And Main Street.
I can imagine if they're based on people there.
Oh, no. It'd be cheap, folks. It'd be cheap, don't worry.
And they get the... They get the added of the picketing that goes in front.
That's why I think it's going to...
No, they have the better...
You guys...
A very successful hotel.
I know, right? All right, so I guess fashion a...
Sealed bid.
Sealed bid. I would probably give 60 days, you know, so we have a nice, long, complete time. And I guess we could... That way you'd have enough time for the real estate. Because I'd like to send it to as many brokers as we could, and I would give them some time to get their customers in and take a look at it. I don't even know if 60 days would be enough.
No, I'd give it 90.
90 days?
The crew estimate restoration.
We're not really rushing it, so we can give it the most I can.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Just doing her wedding. Okay. Move resolutions? No rules of procedure? Let's see where Bob is.
Oh, maybe we'll grab my notes.
Yep. Hey, Laura Shone, could you send Bob down?
Thanks for my glasses.
You have my crown?
So what I'd like to do, in anticipation of Diane coming in, is the draft table of contents for the code.
Wow. This is taking a while. It's a lot of rush.
It is, yeah, it is. But we have a plan, which I think the town board will... That's the first section. This is the final code section. And then the second.
Of course, it definitely... Councilwoman Giglio was in our meeting we had last night. But I was talking to some young people from the town of Riverhead.
Young people.
And you're in code revision.
Yes, there are two of them.
They would like to have affordable housing for young people. We have the 55 and over, and they would like to have affordable housing so the young people can afford a higher house and stay in Riverhead. So that's something for code revision to look at, and that 50... That 45,000 camp one residents that we may have to look at. So those are things that they've came up with, and I think that we should, yeah, look at that. Try to keep young people in the town of Riverhead.
I believe we currently have something in the code that says that if you cluster a subdivision and you provide 10% affordable housing, they'll...
They want affordable housing. They want like, like we have the two, on Osborne Avenue and Middle Road, they want a regular house. They don't want a condo.
I understand that, but we did that on Sound Avenue with the forty piece, where he was given increased density, and he was going to keep a portion affordable. There were four houses that would be affordable, and that would be on the median income of, you know, I guess... So we have it right now. I think that the problem that a lot of our kids and that our youth is having is not necessarily buying a house, but of all the taxes that are associated with a real estate transfer in Suffolk County. Because right off the bat, your closing costs are 2% compounding tax, it's the mortgage It's the mortgage tax. It's the taxes in general.
That was brought up to me.
I know.
It's not, it's not, it's not, they want this and we should not talk negative things. We should see if we can work and get it done and not be negatorial.
Yeah, nothing negative. I'm just saying that we have it. We do, we can answer it.
Right, but I think that's the, the flavor of what had discussions you were waiting for, that we were looking towards less restrictive. You know, fifty-five and oh, it's a lot of everybody. So I think we've got a sense that's the direction we want to go.
And one thing that we can do that Southampton did, and I've spoken to the supervisor about it in the past, is where you say you pay tax on, right now it's you pay tax on anything more than a hundred and fifty thousand. We can raise that and say you have to pay taxes on anything more than two hundred and fifty thousand. That's what they did in Southampton. Yep.
Yeah, but that's because when the real estate.
Southampton was always two fifty. We've always been one fifty. But Southampton does gives an exemption for a first time home buyer.
Yep.
The problem is if we, we are already so far behind, we couldn't, if we did that and we lost the first time home buyers, we'd be paying our CPF funds off with general fund money.
Well, as a matter of fact, Southampton, I mean, the guy contacted me and they wanted Riverhead to jump on board. And they were sending me an email to distribute to the town board because I'm a skeptic. But I explained that we weren't in the same financial situation.
We only brought in, we're so far askew of our, what we're doing here, but we only brought in two, two point three million. We need three point five just to break even.
Well, actually, I, I just, the former vice committee councilman, Gableson and I analyzed it just a week ago. And we need closer to four million.
And our reserves, who will be out of reserves in two thousand sixteen.
Apparently, right now, we're losing part of the fund downs that exists. But truthfully, in just a few years.
Two thousand sixteen, the fund downs, at this rate, unless the market picks up.
Well, yeah. Well, the problem too is that a piece of land over here that's worth three hundred thousand is probably worth almost a million dollars over in Southampton just because of the value of property.
But the nicest Southampton shared some of that. Because they set up these meetings and regionally would try to conserve this because you're one of, you come number one, I think. But they get real selfish when it comes to CBF.
That's my complaint.
They've got to share.
They talk regional, but it's actually town.
Jim, can we focus this back?
Oh, yes, I don't know where we are on this.
Can we focus this back?
Is it the code?
Mooton would like to focus it back to the agenda. I have. Okay, so general code update. What say you?
Well, we finished with the phase one index date portion of the project. And now we're starting to go into phase two, which is their editorial analysis. And they have, I'll give you what they have. They've made some recommendations about forming a small committee or committees. And because it's going to be an intricate, intricate process and it will take all different departments to help with it.
They are saying that they're allowing for a hundred and ten business days to complete, which really isn't a lot of time. So it's going to take them, yeah, so.
Especially if you're going to have a committee together.
Right, right.
But Andy has gotten sheets, made some worksheets and put some things together.
If the town board agrees, the town clerk, we're discussing it and we're trying to come up with the best plan to accomplish the goal. And so I'm just going to go ahead. We prepared a generic worksheet. And I've actually gone through it all already, all the different chapters. And what, if the town board agrees, I would like to distribute these worksheets. I went through the, all the provisions of the code and I assigned different sections to different individuals based upon their expertise. And truthfully, that's not that difficult because you know who works on what. You know Joe Hall with chapter twelve. You know Drew and Dan or Stormwater. So actually, I went through each and every section of the code and just identified the individuals that you need and review it.
Okay, good. That's a good way to do it.
And then they can all report back to the town clerk. This way, we actually have it on file, which would support any proposed amendments to the code.
That's a lot of work, Joe. So you should be thankful for spending your time and putting your thing together.
Yeah, they're going to send us a workbook. They will, so they'll have their input and they'll be looking for our input. So once the workbook comes, it's going to come with the recommendations and as to each section of the code. That's when they'll get that recommendation together with this sheet. And they'll review it and make their own recommendations. And then it all back at somebody.
Let me ask you a question. What about outside people? We have a lot of town attorneys and stuff that work within the code. Contractors that work within the building code. Could we give them a copy and get their remarks? Because they may be very helpful to us too.
Well, for instance, like zoning board of appeals, Scott T. Seaman's counsel, he's going to meet with the zoning board of appeals, the town attorney's office, and his.
No, what I mean, like people would come before them.
Like a Charlie Cuddy.
Yeah, Charlie Cuddy or Peter Danowski, contractors that do building and have to go by the building code to get their input.
It would be hard to coordinate something.
I thought Peter would love to sit and go on the code.
Peter would come back and say, no, here's your code.
No, Peter's always writing us letters. So I think he would, he knows the code. He doesn't have to go over it. He knows the code and he could say the zoning code, this is what should be changed in the zoning code to, to, to help people. And that's all I'm saying.
You don't think he'd come back and say, here, this is all you need, two, two paper?
That's it. Well, yeah, but no, but you've got to get his input. That's the wrong basket.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
Well, we could put out a public notice, have them submit a general and generic.
Well, we're going to have public hearings on everything too.
Right, but not necessarily sit in on each.
Not sit in, just give it to them and say, here, could you, could you write something up and give it back to us? Not to have a committee, but just to give it to them, say, here, you're, you're a big contractor in Town River. You do a lot of building. Can you look this over? And, and this is the building codes. Can you see what should be changed to, to, to make it more appealing to people? They get their, just, just get their input.
Absolutely.
We can use it or we, we don't have to use it.
Well, let's start with the, this.
Okay.
Because I don't know which other than Charlie Cuddy, Peter Danowski. I don't know how far Bob Terry, I don't know how far out you would take something like that. So let's start with this because we're going to public hearings on all of this stuff. And if there's attorneys or contractors that hear this presentation or see it written.
But the problem I have with public hearings is we listen to all these people. And we don't take, we don't take notes or we have to wait until the minutes come out.
I take notes.
And then go through all those. If they wrote something down, we could analyze it, you know, in our spare time and just put notes on a side and say, okay, this is what I like, this is what I don't like. And then we, we would have it before that public hearing. That's all.
That's all right, Jim.
Part of the problem too is that we have things that are in the code and then we have regulations that are adopted by the planning board that contradict the things in the code. So guidelines, we have guidelines that the planning board, when they're reviewing, and Peter would like to see a lot of the things that are codified as guidelines and up to the review of the planning board to decide whether or not twenty percent of the landscaping is throughout the site or whether it's in the front. So there's been, and there's been guidelines and supplements that have been adopted by the planning board.
So this is what I'm saying.
Well, they were adopted by local law. Local law has been trying to guide them.
Yes, but that's part of the contradictory pattern that Peter finds in the code that brings to code revision. And then we decide, but then the planning board says that if it's not codified, then someone will come in and argue that they don't need any landscaping because they need to make the building bigger.
Just so we can get the.
So let's, people are going, you know, about this.
I can understand that, Sean. I, I think, I was under the impression that the reason there was so many inconsistencies throughout our code throughout the years because of the changing town and, and actually the whole direction the town took as a community, that we wanted to solidify our own codes without it was this, isn't that the whole?
That is.
That's a key component of this editorial of thousands.
Well.
Those are the loopholes.
Correct.
My impression is let's do it Anne Marie has set forth. If only attorneys or contractors want to point, the civic organizations want to make a recommendation to something, they make the recommendation. And because we're going to public hearing, we would have that recommendation before us too and we may or may not use it. But I don't want to set up separate committees. They always have the ability to write to us.
I wouldn't set up a committee. I'd give it up.
Right. You want a letter from me sort of directing a staff within a certain timeframe to do this?
Yeah. But I'll come to you for that once we receive the workbook from them.
And I appreciate you working on the index because that made it more easier to apply things.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
It has been.
And the zoning code too.
The zoning code is powerful.
The least intense to the more intense.
Right.
The zoning codes.
So now I have a question for you in that what happens? You have all these articles and they're in Roman numeral order. And then if we're going to insert an article, like we have wind energy systems for agricultural uses and have been working with Suffolk County Planning and other elected officials in other towns to adopt a wind energy code for residential, which we'll be discussing next week at work session. So how do you, you know, then it's going to be all out of order again.
Now, really easy fix. This article will be wind energy systems, A, agricultural uses, B, residential.
But that's not how it's listed right now.
Because we don't have, that's an easy amendment.
Okay, so it'll be entitled wind energy and instead of.
Because it does make sense. Why have two wind energy chapters? Instead, we have one wind energy chapter, a section A and a section B.
So then we'll also have wireless communications. Instead of the article being entitled wireless communications, towers and antennas, it'll be wireless communications and then A will be towers and B will be antennas and.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we have to be more careful. Once we have a new code book, I think we have to be much more careful in how we adopt our amendments. In the administration provisions, what we intentionally did, if you noticed, it's one oh one, one oh three, one oh five. The reason we did that is if we adopt new legislation that cannot be grouped under any of these, we left spaces, so it'll be one oh one, one oh two, trying to keep it in alphabetical order.
Makes sense.
So that's why you have that.
The problem I see with all these code books, and I tried to research something with the town of Southampton, the town of Brookhaven last week. And I thought, oh, this would take me to computerize. I'll just put things on it. It took me all day long to try to find something that should take you five minutes in a computer to put, search for this. But these codes are all over the place. I mean, they, you have, you have parking in this section, you have parking in that section. You got parking down here.
You did a word search.
Parking, yeah, parking. And you go all over the place.
Well, that's, it'll be terrific once we've completed this process because it's our code, Town of Riverhead, will be very similar.
In our code, the reason I was reading is our code says no parking on this street. See Town of Riverhead, official map of the Town of Riverhead in the, in the town clerk's office. Well, we, we went and we looked and we could not find anything. So I'm having, I'm having, one, what, one of your person in your office who did this, Laura, is we're going to change all those sections and identify where no parking is instead of saying, go to the clerk's office and look at a map. I mean, it's, and she doesn't have it back. I, I think when, when people were doing this code years and years ago, they found the easiest way to do it and that was the easiest way to do it. We want to do it so an ordinary person can open the code and look and find something.
Absolutely.
It's the same thing with the signs. You know, it says that, that building department will issue them a placard saying that the sign is legal. We've never issued a placard.
Right.
I don't have a placard.
Well, I just found out that, that we have, we're supposed to build everyone in our, in our waterways that have moorings out there. And we have not to build anyone. Huh? So, I mean, this is.
So far.
Here we go, Sean. Something has entered.
Let's, let's go.
But there are things that we do.
So we'll wait for the workbook. As soon as we get the workbook, then we will let it go down.
Excellent. We will send the letter out.
We'll send it.
All right, Bob.
Thank you. So these are going to be more generalized, the articles. For the title of the article is going to be general and then we'll be able to do A, B, C, D, E.
They are general.
With this.
That's all we have.
Yeah, find it, find it as well because we don't have to test any more errors. They drop them.
They drop them. Right?
That's it.
All right, we are talking about town board rules. Earlier, Councilman Gibson had sent me a draft. He took your comments, he added to them, he deleted, and I sent that around to the board.
You're fine.
And I, I also.
It was my crown.
I also did one last, I also did one last addition to it, which I, I don't know if you want to consider. I added a couple additional things to.
Made the print smaller is what you did.
Well, and the, and the problem we have here is that, oh, you mock where you added.
I, I, what I did was I, I, so you can go and look at the highlights in the additions. I don't know if, you may want to consider some or all. For example, there was one of the other municipalities, and I think also the association of towns had in there a, a good provision which dealt with how speakers are to deal with us during public hearings and, and in general, and not engage in debate.
Right, the discussion be with the board, not with the public. They can't go back.
Well, actually, you should put, yeah, that, the board members should listen and not be.
Also, also at the top, I limited not more than five minutes. It just said five minutes, so I thought you wanted a five minute limit. So I added that.
Right.
Um, I also, in, under bait, and I, I don't know if you want to entertain this, but basically we wanted to limit the amount of times that any town board member could speak during a debate. So.
Go with that.
This is something I borrowed, borrowed right out of the association of towns' suggested rules.
Right.
I plagiarized.
I just got your email yesterday with Councilman Gableson's comments. And I have comments of my own, so I would just like to compare the two. And then I think that we should all put our comments in and then discuss it later day. Because some of the comments that I made might already be in here.
Let's go through these because this is.
Yes, this is straightforward.
Let's go through these because they're pretty straightforward. So, and then we'll put it out for next week. So.
I only made four changes. One was delete, we talked about reports of special committees. I'm not sure I was just reform committee.
Well, that, that's fine, taking out Roman numeral eight, C. George, what do you think of that one?
Um, it's one, eight.
Just addressing the ones that Bob made changes to.
Well, no, the public doesn't know what the final draft was and what you made changes.
Well, they'll get it.
They, I mean, yeah, we know, we know, yeah. So, I mean.
So on the changes I made, you added C.
I want to speak on one second.
On, I remember, on the changes you made to the original draft, I made a totality of four changes. The first was to delete reports of special committees. I'm not sure how that differs from committee reports.
That's right.
The second change I made was in rule.
Seven.
Seven, not more than five minutes.
I think that's good.
And then I added two additional sentences which dealt with when the speakers are addressing the board, they're to address you, not to engage the general public in a debate format.
I think that's good.
And secondly, that there, when they come to address you, they should state their name and home address and state their business or question.
If you have a question.
Right. And then the last one I made was.
And C.
C. I would, I would say C. I'm good with C except I, I think, you know, to twice part. I just take the last, I mean, I'm just throwing this out. Everyone should speak, everyone should speak first and, but no more than twice in any case. I mean, I think.
So you're going to end a period after spoken.
Spoken, that would make me comfortable.
Fine.
So that, that, we're talking about ourselves.
Oh, we're talking about ourselves, yeah. Or I don't think.
Everyone should speak first.
Here's the controversy I have. You're limiting speakers to five minutes.
Which we never do.
Which we know what, when there's a debate between.
That's only for the, the general comment period, not for a public hearing because George added in, Councilman Gableson, I'm sorry, that there should be no time limit for public comment, public hearing. That was, that was.
But what I mean, but, but general comment.
Right.
The problem limiting to five minutes is that when the town board member starts debating with these people. is that when the town board member starts debating with these people, that five minutes then goes to 10 minutes, and you can't give it the five-minute rule. I don't think we should debate. Let the public speak. We're here to listen to the public, and we're here to, to take their comments and then refer to us and debate between us at a work session or some other time, and not debate with the speaker. He's here to speak, we're here to listen.
I've said that from day one.
Yes.
I've always been a proponent for that. I try never to engage him. So I mean, at the point of that.
I think that's our responsibility not to jump in. I mean, they give the five minutes.
Let them speak and say, yeah, we got responsible. See what's going on right here is we're talking over each other. I think what this debate has to do is to address exactly what's happening now, where we can have their say, and then the next person have their say. But I think that's dealing with the sport, just communicating with each other.
Yes, we shouldn't step over each other.
Right.
So, but I mean, if... Excuse me, what?
If the...
Do you see me? Do you hear clearly?
If the speaker speaks and then some board member answers him, that's going to have the speaker start speaking again, because he's not going to like what the board member says, because the board members don't like what he says. It's him into debate then. We should not have that. We should be listeners, and then between ourselves, we can debate.
Look at this.
It's actually...
George, you want to say something to the other side?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I want to respond to what he was saying. Five minutes upon terms and conditions that the supervisor made from time to time. So prescribed. So if we're engaging in a debate back and forth with somebody, we would leave it open, because maybe somebody has a really good point that we want to flush out.
The supervisor has the ability to let it go.
I just think we should be debating with a speaker. They come here to speak. We shouldn't put a speaker down. We should let them speak and take it in, and then we have our own discussion on what the supervisor said.
Sometimes you'll agree, Johnny, they ask the pointed question. Maybe about recreation, maybe about parking. You would want to maybe respond to something. Not a debate, they'll ask for some kind of information. But the supervisor has the ability to let that conversation go on.
Or...
Describe this, yeah. It's in here.
I feel we're listeners. We're here to listen and to take heed to what they say.
Could you listen to Councilman Gabriel, you know?
Go ahead.
The problem that I have is that sometimes speakers will come up to the podium and they'll give misinformation to the public as to what they're actually speaking about or what they're saying is not actually factual, and it needs to be clarified. And by just letting them say whatever they want to say when it's not true, it's not factual, and it's just a perception of theirs, and not being able to say, well, this is what it says, and this is why we did it that way. I think that that opportunity should be provided to the town board members in order to clarify any misconception that's being stated at the podium.
I absolutely agree with you, but I think there comes a time when that's done, and it might not be immediate. I think when the speaker has done and finished what they were saying, you certainly will have your time to refute or to clarify and leave it at that. It should be a give and take or exist. After five minutes.
Right, and then once they have their five minutes, then the board members can...
Can clarify or agree or disagree. I say not very much, Johnny.
Well, I think our audience is intelligent to know when they listen to someone, if it's his opinion. I mean, people print things in the papers all the time that are incorrect. I mean, do we debate in the paper? No, people read it. They know what the town does. They know what the things are. They're educated, they're intelligent. They can understand that's somebody's opinion.
John, you're assuming that everybody reads the paper or that everybody reads the online, and not a lot of people do. They're busy in their lives, they're working two or three jobs, and they're not paying attention to...
No, no, what I'm saying, anybody listens to television. Everybody doesn't turn on television either, 22. So those are the only people that are going to hear him.
I'm just saying that if a speaker comes up and puts information out that may be misconceived, that a board member should have the right to refute or to clarify.
Right. I do think you still do.
And you still do, it's not removed from here.
I just don't want to, I just don't like the debate going. Because I've seen here where some board members have interrupted a person before he gets finished talking, and next thing you know, we're into a debate back and forth. It just doesn't, we're here to listen. We're not here to debate. That's wrong.
We have to control ourselves.
That's right.
Well, I'm in there, five minutes of fame, it's in here.
That's right.
Our response. Pink today, I want to paint it, it comes out, that's controlling.
And like I say, if it's a public issue, they can go on, or once they are. Public hearing, they can still go on, that's all.
Are we good with Bob's changes and George's changes?
Now, you say no more than twice. You want to strike that last one?
Strike that last one.
No more than twice, right.
That will come out.
And then we'll put it on one more time for next week, and then if it's ready to go, we'll put it on for the next court meeting, and we'll have rules.
Procedures.
Thank you, Bob.
Wait, because we, did we go through eight yet? Because the debate.
Eight was actually reduced. Originally, there are, I think, a total of six subsections, and Councilman Gibson deleted subsections D through E.
Right, what we're doing is, we took my code, my proposal. George amended it.
But Sarah told you that it offered you mostly.
Right, we try to like those. Put it in there, Bob amended it further, so now we're...
And Councilman Gabriel is going to amend it further. And now?
Yeah, but I would just like to discuss some of it now, if we could. Like, rule number nine, debatable motions, A, where it says the main motion, the main motion is a motion by itself or one to adopt a local law or a resolution before the town board. It may be amended, and I would just like a comma and to have it say moved or require a majority vote except, so that it's not just amended, that you can actually move a resolution with a majority vote.
If you can do that, things are in there.
Yeah, you can amend it, but...
We can't amend it until the motion is moved and seconded anyway, so we can't make any amendments until it's moved and seconded.
Yeah.
Well, you got to read it all together, and under seven, debate shall not begin until there is a motion, which has been moved by a town board member and seconded by another town board member. That's the action.
That's a live topic going forward.
And then amend it, and then you vote on it. You can amend it if you want, and you vote on it.
I mean, it moved.
The main motion is a motion by itself.
You wanted to say seconded and seconded?
Or one to adopt a local law or a resolution before the town board. It may be amended. I would just like you to say it may be moved or amended and requires a majority vote.
So maybe amended, then?
Not even seeing why.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. It may be amended, and we still want to move it as it is.
You can't amend anything without a motion.
Right.
So this thing that you want to amend has already been moved and seconded. It's a live motion at this point. So say that now we want to amend it and move it, it's already moved.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying amend it and move it. I'm saying amend it or move it. This is if someone, if a board member wants to put up a resolution that, or move a resolution, and it's not being amended, we just want to move a resolution forward. That's why I just wanted to say moved or amended.
Well, we can move that if we want to vote it. If it's seconded, if it's more than seconded, then we're going to move the resolution without amending it.
See, what I'm saying, Joey, you're looking under rule number nine, which is debatable motions.
Yes.
You cannot debate a motion unless it's been moved and seconded.
Right.
It's not, you can't do anything with a motion until it's moved and seconded.
Motion is there, should amend it.
That's what you have for discussion, yes, for amendment, yes, for... So it only becomes debatable after it's moved and seconded anyway.
Right. And then you vote on it.
That's why I think the word moved should be in there, because you just said moved and seconded.
All right, we put moved in there, Bob, there's a difference there.
Where are you putting moved? I don't even...
It may be moved or amended and requires, maybe moved and/or amended.
It may be amended and requires a majority vote.
How could you put moved in there? Because it's already moved.
It's already moved.
That's part of the rules.
It came as a debate, that's part, that would be up to them. Yeah, goes way back to just, that goes way back to resolutions. We have number...
Is it seven? Is it in seven?
Well, yeah, in seven.
Or eight?
No, in seven it does start. It says, you know, when debate will follow, and the debate will only follow at such time as it's been moved by a town board member and seconded. So then you have your main motion, it's been moved and seconded, and now it becomes a debatable motion.
Right. And you can amend it?
Right.
Or you can just vote the way that it was presented.
That's right.
So that's what you made, Joey.
I mean, just make a couple. I mean, you can put it in there, but it'd be redundant.
Since this is, kind of follows Robert's rules, I would be, I'm a little hesitant to throw moved in there.
But there's some things that were in the original legislation that were drafted that I couldn't find in Robert's rules, because I have the book, and I was reading it, and I was trying to find the things that were in here in the book, and I was unable to, so...
Well, that's right, I think, I'll delete it, I deleted it.
Yes, because you couldn't find that in Robert's rules, because it's already been moved and seconded. So it's a motion that's live. Do you want to amend it, or do you want to move it the way it is? If you amend it, then you're amending a moved resolution as amended, and you move it.
Right, if you put moved or amended in there, you're...
That's why you can't find it, because it's...
No, no, I'm saying that a lot of this stuff, even in the other subsections, are not in the book.
No, it isn't, nor would it be.
But we're referring to all these things as being in the book, and they're not in the book.
No, we said we're following Robert's rules of order.
No, George took that out.
Oh, you did take it out?
Yes.
Yes, because we don't, we'll be here, we won't, we want people to listen. This is a combination of the Association of Towns' recommendations.
Oh, so we're even going to look in that book now? We're just going by what this is?
Pretty much.
But I think that...
I can have this to memorize.
I think that we, as a board, should say, these are the things that are important to us, and I know, John, the five-minute rule, and then being able to respond once to clarify or to, you know, clear up any misconception. That that's an important issue to you at the town board meetings.
No, we'll try to resolve the issue, yes, absolutely.
I think that, you know, all of us as members of the board should say, these are our problems with the way the meetings are being run, and this is what we think should be amended.
And you brought it up, and now we're debating what you brought up. And that's the way to debate.
I know, a lot of this stuff is jumbo jumbo, that I don't...
Well, we're just not going to change it.
Necessary. I think that the five-minute rule, I think, yeah.
Well, any time, or...
But we're going to put it on for next week, but I think the issue is, you can't, if you have a live motion, you can't move it and amend, you know, it's a live motion. You're either going to amend it or you're going to vote on it. You're not moving it again. You don't move a live motion a second.
You can't even call a question. By Robert's rule, you can't even call a question on a resolution until it's moved and seconded, because it's not real until it's moved and seconded.
Got it.
All right, so anything else that we want to look at today? Or you want to put the debate over to next week?
I think we should debate.
How do you deal with motions debatable?
Without debate. So, rule ten.
Yeah, rule ten, table, motion is used to postpone the subject under discussion to some time in the near future. It is not amendable and requires a majority vote when the subject is to be reconsidered. The motion is in order to remove the matter from the table.
Thank you.
I like the way it's put it here, not previous version.
Right, this is the...
But like I said, I didn't get to see George's, so, okay, we'll talk about it next week.
All right, put it on for next week.
Okay.
Probably, thanks for being up.
Thank you.
All right, resolutions. Did the travel policy in there? Talk to the board about that hotel.
Oh, it's, um, it was 205 and 264.
What is the Association of Towns?
We make some changes, so that's the latest one.
And 205 or 264.
No, 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 what's the Association costing us?
Sheridan was 205, Mary was 264.
264.
You have to pay $70, $60 to go to the...
Well, I would think that would be the... And that's why I said, New York is different from the rest of the United States. New York, we have people come here all the time. They're taking an average of all the United States, and I do think New York is different than a place out in Arizona or someplace else.
Well, but the only issue is that we've sent people to the Association of Towns, meaning...
That's what the agreement was.
And we already know that...
Was, um, when are you going in February?
February, yeah.
204 was the maximum.
What is the Association of Towns charging us?
Um, I didn't have to ask for which hotel you're going to, because one of them was two oh five and the other one was two sixty four.
Joe, I'm sure the two sixty four is the one we're staying.
Yeah.
I think, pardon me, the, uh, the- Hey, Laura, Sean, the Association of Towns, um, hotel, uh, prices with two different hotels, can you access that quickly? Fifty-six, sorry. Sheridan was two oh five.
Who's staying in?
I know we're passing a resolution that, uh, Hilton is two fifty, that, okay, we're passing a travel policy that may, that anybody's reimbursed for. Two oh five, two oh four.
Two oh four.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Well, you are getting your seventy dollars per diem, so you can kick in your seventy dollars per diem for it. But it is the Association of Towns, Hilton's two fifty-six, and we're going to look at it.
Two fifty-six, okay.
Two oh four.
That's what I said, so I, I always think-
Sounds like happy meals.
Huh?
Sounds like happy meals, and that's true, mate. Oh, that's true.
Happy meals, that's right.
Uh, you know.
I just feel that, uh, that it should be the rate of the, uh, of the places you're going. I mean, we send people to Albany and we send people all over the place. And if their conference in a hotel is charged, I, I, I can't see why we're sending people and then we're saying that you have to pay the additional charge because this is the hotel, the place they're in, and you have to stay in it. So, I'll tell you what, go down the road, stay in a motel, and rent a car to go back and forth to a conference. We could also do that. I mean, you know, now we're probably costing more money, because now we're telling them to rent a car to go back and forth, but you got to stay in a cheaper hotel.
I think a way to do this is to, uh, is to, if you word it in there, that the town will pay a maximum of only the government pay.
That's what it says.
But that's what it said. And not put a number on it. The government paid that two fifty.
Well, you have to, they, they set a number and you have to go buy that.
That's great, well, yeah.
Right, and if you register late, then the room costs you more. So, if some people decide that they're going until a later date, then, and they say, well, I want to go now, and we, the town shouldn't have to pay that increase free.
The town should pay whatever the government pays.
Because they decided late they're going.
That's a good principle, we sent somebody on a, on a resolution, uh, we should, uh, pay them what the hotel is charging.
I know, but it works for the federal government all across the United States and-
Again, we're not the federal government, we're a local municipality, and, and our people don't get paid as much as the, the federal government.
Well, New York State doesn't.
Yeah, but they have a, they have a, that's true, but they, they have a, they have a, expensive, expensive.
And I don't know if they really follow that, so, I, I haven't asked any-
I have a former federal worker, they followed it. You got, you know, a hotel, and you got your per diem, and that was it. I mean, the only place we send people really to the city, that, the only place I think you're really going to have the problem is going to the Association of Towns. And unfortunately, for the couple of us that are going to the Association of Towns, um, we're already stuck in, um, see, we're already stuck in the Hilton. We could have went to the Sheridan, if I canceled the Hilton and go to the Sheridan, exactly what Jody said, I'm going Tuesday night, I'm going to pay more to do that. So, if, if we pass this resolution in the future, we'll be telling everybody, you have to stay at the Sheridan, which is across the street. You just have to walk down the street. Maybe, I've been in it, it's not, it's just as nice a hotel.
No.
I'm okay with the flat rates across the board, but, but now you're going to get a per diem that you never got before. You probably never turned your, your receipts in.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, now you're going to get seventy dollars.
Of course, you go, I'll be with four or five people, it's, it's, you know.
Now you're automatically going to get a seventy dollar per diem, so for me, um, I'll put the, I'm eating happy meals. It didn't matter, because I had to feed myself anyways.
That'll cost twenty dollars in Manhattan.
But I'm thinking, not of us, I'm thinking of our, our workers that we're sending, uh, after these conferences.
I say we adopt it and if we have to amend it.
Have we, have we researched the numbers that, that they are having paying? I don't know.
Well, I think this is a town board resolution, a town board resolution can be amended by a resolution. So, if somebody comes to us and we give them per diem rate, and we find out that it is completely not going to work, a simple resolution is going to fix it. You don't even have to change the policy, you can just change it for that person on the resolution.
John, what I think it does is it alleviates the carte blanche of people saying, okay, so you had a choice between a two oh five and a two fifty-six. You chose a two fifty-six, had you known that you weren't only getting up to two oh five, you probably would have just went to the two oh four and walked up the street. It limits people to a four-star hotel as opposed to a three-star hotel. Why should the town not pay and pay for a higher price?
Well, that's what you said, we're sort of like, sort of like, lift down the motel and rent a, uh, take a cab back and forth.
But that's not true, they don't need to.
You know, I'm, I'm okay, you know.
This, I think that this, yeah.
I think it works.
I mean, I'm okay taking the train back and forth, uh, to, to this conference. You get, you have to get up in the morning, go on the train, take it in, go back.
Drive it so you can get up early with me and drive.
Oh, no, I'd rather get, I don't drive the traffic, because you get stuck in the line.
Get up at four o'clock in the morning, would be, would be the day before the sun comes up.
You're dead.
Before the sun comes up, it'd be in the-
So, I mean, you know, but I don't mind taking the train back and forth, you just, you know.
You just don't love driving.
I just, um, I think I'm okay with it.
All right, well, I will be okay with it the way it is, it's just unfortunate that a couple of us are going to have to pay out of our per diem, which we, most of us probably never did anyway. All right, let's go through the resolutions. One, Twenty-First Century Oncology Water Service Capital Project, um, this is for the water main that they, or sewer, uh, water main, rather, for Twenty-First Century Oncology, right next to Burger King.
Yeah, we're not paying for this, they're paying.
Correct. Two, Acceptance of Resignation of Pauline Inventory Clerk. No, Victoria S. Lofani resigned?
Yep.
Sorry, this is here, y'all. Three, Grants Excavation Permit Provided by Chapter Sixty-Two of the Riverhead Town Code, South Pole Medical Arts, AKA East End Eye Associates. A fee of two hundred dollars. Four, Ratifies Town Board Nomination of Suffolk Data for Preservation League to the New York State, uh, Two Thousand Thirteen Excellence Award. Five, Authorizes Town Clerk to Post and Publish Resolution for the Request for Proposals for Young Zane and Landfill Post-Closure Inspections, Testing, and Reporting Activities. This is for a bid.
This is, yeah, this is mandated, we have to do this.
It's the only way you can get your grant money, too.
Oh, they want to bid too for the grant money? Nice. Six, Um, Authorizes Highway Superintendent to Attend Two Thousand Thirteen National Truck Equipment Association Work Truck Show.
Now, this has to be changed, the, the course did not exceed fifteen others.
Um, Tara, when we pass this, he's going to have to, he's bound by the travel policy, once again.
Indiana, I think, isn't that where it's at?
March, March sixth, and, all right, we have to, um-
It's got to be amended.
It's going to have to be amended so that the course doesn't exceed our travel policy.
Well, I think you need a, um, a max on it as well, because, you know, you're talking about registration, the conference itself is not in the travel policy.
And travel expense.
So, we can amend it to, you know, reflect the travel policy for reimbursement and as well as the conference center.
And cap it at the fifty.
Yeah, because I think he drives there, so he's got to pay for the gas, he's got to, he doesn't fly there. And I know that, uh, our assessors sometimes go to Salt Lake City, Utah, where they fly, so that's not going to work for them either.
Well, I think that, um-
If it's out of state, it's, it's got to be a different.
No, we, 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 this, this, the federal government is all over the United States.
That's right, we have, that's what rates are across the United States.
So, it's, it's, it's not, the, travel is not in, this is for lodging and meals.
Right.
That's what the travel policy is, lodging and meals, not to get there. You can fly, you can get there anywhere you want.
Okay.
But this is only for, um, lodging and meals.
The travel policy?
Yes.
Okay, so everything else, the flights and the auto expense, the gas, everything?
Right, the mileage reimbursement is a flat rate, that's set.
Yeah, that's reimbursement.
Got to be.
Okay.
All right, approves Request for Leave of Absence, this Ezra.
Yeah, Sean, I put it as, um-
Three months?
Yeah.
Do we know why he's leaving for three months?
I don't, I think it said personal reasons.
What's that? Extends, uh, Site Plan Proof for Xenia Proof LLC, Ray Casparovo. Can we extend this one more time?
I, you know what, I was thinking, what have we had around?
What?
I don't think it's, I, I don't know.
You may be able to, this is no further extensions will be granted. Can you check with Bob to make sure, because the code allows certain extensions? He came in and redid this once before.
That might have diverted a lesson.
Doing it again. But I want to make sure that he's within the code.
Okay.
Nine, Awards Bid for Supporting Goods for Two Thousand Twelve, Two Thousand Thirteen. Ten, Authorization to Publish Advertisement for Propane Fuel.
Ten and eleven are identical, I think.
Oh, are they? I'm sorry.
Okay, take eleven out. Twelve, Authorization to Publish Advertisement for Two Thousand Thirteen Pickup Truck, what is this?
This is the sensation, I believe, Sean.
When we post an advertisement for a Two Thousand Thirteen Pickup Truck?
I'm sorry?
We have, there's a state contract, there's a county contract, you can buy it off of that.
I don't know, I don't know why this is, it's a power lift gate, snowplow practice.
Town truck, all of that's on the state and county contract.
All right, I'll talk to Marion about that.
But nowadays, what we've seen with the sewer district, when we've sent out bids, if you send it out for an RFP, you sometimes get them for less than what is on the state contract because of the economy, so I don't, I don't think it can hurt.
I don't know about that, the county, we did the police cause the last time, and the Ford dealer, local Ford dealer said, once those old Crown Vics were up, he couldn't touch the county contract.
Can't you grab some trucks off the brother, brother's a good dealer.
Just go there at night. And I think we should, I think we should look.
I'll find out, yeah.
And also, I think this could be a good candidate for Jody's propane.
But the state has, has said that we can purchase off of any municipality, uh, bid. So, if the school district has bid for these things, or the county, or a village.
Okay.
Uh, or the water, we, we can take off anyone.
Okay, I'll talk to Marion.
So, what's the research?
And we should also talk to Michael Reckel, too, because I know that he's looking for, he's saying that he needs a new truck.
Michael Reckel's truck has a hundred fifty thousand miles on it, when you start it, it almost looks like it's on fire with the amount of oil it burns. So, um, if we're bidding, if we're, and light duty, I don't know, is this a light-duty truck? This, this doesn't even say if it's a light-duty truck, a heavy-duty truck.
Well, it adds a snowplow, it has to be heavy.
And it's got a liftgate.
You're going to have an F-150 with a snowplow package these days, so let's-
I'll look at, I'll hold this short, I'll look at it.
Let's look at it.
Yeah, and talk to Michael, because he and I have been meeting with the Ford dealerships and trying to get the packages for the propane, yeah.
Propane, okay.
Okay, thirteen, Establishes Travel and Conference Policies. So, you're going to, we're okay with this, I gather, we're going to amend the G O's Resolution and let it-
Yeah, I'll, yep, I'll double-check with that, and then, um, I'll firm that up with the county.
Fourteen, Two Thousand Thirteen Washington Avenue Forward Budget Adoption. Fifteen, Accept Hundred Percent Site Plan Security for Hampton Dip, Chip, Chip New, Jeffrey Lynch.
Well, I'm glad we're starting on this.
There is some-
An excavation permit for that, too.
Yeah, well, we had some other things, too, but yes. There's possibly, you might have to renew his, um, special permit, we haven't figured that out yet.
No.
Sixteen, Approves-
We can always call somebody else, I mean, huh?
Yeah. Sixteen, Approves Chapter Ninety Application for American Cancer Society Barf Life Door Walk, Mark Clara, May Nineteen. Seventeen, Approves Chapter Ninety Application of the American Heart Association Healing Department Five-K Run Walk, Mark Clara, May Nineteen. Fifteen, Appointing the Firm of Smith Pinkelstein Yakrabowski Isler at Southern Backwood Special Counsel in Respect to Claims Against Thurms LLC in Hometown Thurms Estates LLC, this is on that C P F tax. That was on page we talked about.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Nineteen, Authorizes the Supervisor to Execute Polling Place Agreements with Suffolk County Board of Elections.
They're looking to know where we are, they don't like the American Legion anymore.
And a senior center, that's what they use from us.
We normally do it there, don't we?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, we always do it there. And the seniors.
Twenty, Authorizes Supervisor Execute License Agreement, East End Oysters to Allow Installation of Floating Uplower System Flopsy in East Creek.
Is this, is this Rivera, Tara Rivera, we're going to get her to that, too.
Right. Twenty-one, Authorizes Supervisor Execute Amended Agreement with Riverhead Youth Sportsing for Referee Fire Services. What was the amendment to this?
Um, apparently the boys lacrosse referee, um, total was incorrect, and it was done last year the same way. Joanne just didn't realize that there was an increase in the ref, in the rep fees, so we're increasing the boys lacrosse from twenty-five eighty to twenty-six ninety.
Okay.
But everything else stayed the same.
Sure. Twenty-two, Authorizes Supervisor to Execute, uh, a Rider Agreement with Consulted Professional Services with Next, Next Tara, One Bank, L L C D V A Black Box Network Services. What is, is this the one we're using right now, and why are we doing an amendment?
You know, Sean, I didn't ask.
It is the one that we're using now, and I'm working with Anne Marie on bringing, we had brought Black Box in for a presentation as to what we could do to upgrade our phone systems and become more, uh, into the Twenty-First Century. So, we are, I also met with another company for preparing a request for proposal, so we'll be sending it out, and then-
Sean, it looks like we're extending the, um, contracts.
Oh, it ended October thirty-first?
It ended, well, February twenty-eighth is when it's going to end. So, we're going to extend it from March to August, I guess, until Jody and Anne Marie can-
Okay, so it's a short amendment.
Okay, that is the old one, not the new Black Box.
This is the one where it's the old telephone operator, where you go open the cabinet, if someone goes their desk from here to there, and you go pull out the line, and you plug it in.
Tara, what is this attached to the Black?
I don't know, I was just looking at that, you know, it probably came on my printer.
Yeah, I don't, that's probably not public knowledge.
No.
Yeah, right.
Twenty-three, Approves Chapter Ninety Application for East End A T, this is the festival on Water Clara, that's, uh, that's good, last week. I think we're, Approve Chapter Ninety Application of the Conic Bay Medical Center Eighteenth Annual East End Garden Festival, May Nineteen, ninth to May twelve. Twenty-five, Releases Irrevocable Letter and Accepts Cashier's Check in Connection with Improvements to Be Completed with the Subdivision Entitled Country Trails, Portview Homes, A T.
Now, can I, can I ask you a question? Going back to you, Sean, once, if you want to take a look at the last page, why can't the public know?
Because I don't think they, no, they, they-
Losing privacy.
No, they, that, okay, that's, that's not the, that's not the, that's not the, you just, the public should know about this.
Not yet, it wasn't public, they will, probably.
Yes, that would be why.
Not yet, okay, okay. Okay, I agree with that, but-
Yeah, you should have a spy camera going.
The public should know about it.
Everywhere. Uh, Twenty-five, Releases, uh, Conferences, Portview Homes.
Cut your tails off, I'm waiting for that.
You know, can we go back to twenty-five, because I don't see anywhere in here, in this release, of this hundred and sixty-six thousand, that-
I didn't, I didn't even finish reading it.
That the, um, town engineer and that the planning department agree that this should be released after inspections.
I think they're substituting.
It's not to be acceptable.
They're substituting an irrevocable letter of credit for the cashier's check. They're just giving us a cash, that's better than a letter of print.
Right, but how long has it been going on? Because we have people, lots of them in there now, and what improvements are yet to be done, and-
I don't, where is Country Trail?
I don't know which one, Country Trail.
Where is Country Trail?
It's right off of Osborne Avenue, right on the, um, right-hand side, or on the east side, I believe.
No, Country Trail's the one.
It's just north of here, isn't it, Country Trail?
Or just the one off the Bill Road?
Isn't Country Trail, because I think that's just north of, of your place?
Is this the one off the Bill Road?
Is that Meadow something, what is it?
Is that Meadow?
I don't think it's, I don't know if it's Mill, I mean, it's either between Mill and Osborne, or-
Yeah, it's Meadow something, and they actually, they're in Baton Rouge.
I don't understand why we have regulations that don't identify where these places are.
Well, we're not doing, we're not doing anything right now, we, I'm sure we could ask Laura, because I'm sure Laura did it.
We're guessing.
But the only thing we're asking here is that they already have an irrevocable letter of credit, they're giving you better than you have.
Right, I agree with that, but I just like to know where we're talking about.
Ask Laura and get back to us, because I'm sure Laura-
Okay, this is great, though, I, I, I'll take a check anytime.
Of course, we already have the check, apparently. Twenty-six, Authorizes the Supervisor to Execute Agreement Authorizing the Town to Accept Funds From Suffolk County Office For the Aging For Their Supplement, uh, to supplement the town's residential repair program for the older, like, yeah. Twenty-seven, Authorizes Attendance At The Two Thousand Thirteen New York State Town Clerks Association Annual Conference. You have to do the same thing.
Yep, I'll, I'll do it from here on out, I'll, I'll include it.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight, Authorizes Supervisor Execute Stipulation Agreement to Riverhead, oh, did we get that all squared away with the Superior Officers Association?
Yep, the attached agreement is not for, um-
All right, let's, we'll look at, we'll read this on your own, and then this is, I guess, what we'll-
That's exactly what, um, was agreed to.
I'll have someone read that out.
Fifteen, So, we're three years.
Right.
Yeah, twenty-nine, Appoints a Callan Recreation Leader to the Recreation Department, listening at the bottom. Ken, um, Ray, we put in the budget, we have to remind Ray this with the Bad Brew Centers.
Yes, yes, I spoke to Jerry, oh, I thought you were talking about that.
No, we put for the comfort station, we put in his budget that he was going to put some recreation people to open the two comfort stations
Okay.
from the summertime.
Yep.
And then to police Grand Gible Park, keep it neat, police the waterfront, you can do the recreation budget, he had them, he opened that line.
Okay.
I have a job for, uh, tell some-
You want to man the comfort station?
Thank you.
I do a lot of, if you need to step up to a play, I have no problem doing that.
Don't need to man the comfort station, we get a college kid to do it. But we have to remind Ray that he has to-
I will.
He needs to run the pop-up boat.
Let's keep it clean, Johnson. Thirty, we're almost there, Approves Chapter Ninety Application of East End Tourism Alliance Riverhead Foundation for Marine Research and Preservation.
This is, this is, this is good. This is going to showcase our river, and I still don't know how these people stand up on these paddles, not in paddles, but they do it.
Thirty-one, Grants Excavation Grade Permit is Provided by Chapter Sixty-Two of the Riverhead Town Code to Hampton, Dip. This is what we talked about. Our excavation code is a little strange, because even if you import material, you need an excavation permit, you know, they shouldn't get that, that doesn't- I know why we did it, but we didn't, I think it was done the previous court, I don't think we did it.
We didn't do it.
But it seems a little odd that if you're importing material, or it's a simple cut and fill, and nothing's leaving, but maybe that we wanted to have controls.
Well, I think that it's the effect that the importation or exportation has on our road systems and on our, our infrastructures.
Well, they don't pay to import material.
I think it was some concern about exactly what they were bringing in themselves.
Bringing in contaminated stuff, yeah, I, I agree. They, they thought that they might bring contaminated stuff in and dump it here, and that's why they have been doing this.
They-
You don't understand what they're talking about.
Yes. Yeah, we should look at that.
Yes, you have to look at that, okay?
Oh, right, we're expected to, we have one more, thirty-one, what do I know?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, right. Promotes the Superintendent of Recreation One from Regional Parks and Recreation in New York.
Yeah, this was what you guys agreed to at the last executive session, but, um, you wanted it to include more of the parks.
Actually, it's hard promotion, we're just giving them that position.
But in order to give them the position, it's because it's a civil service title.
Well, I don't like that, we're not promoting, we're just, he, he, we're giving them a different-
I'm part of that conversation, so I'm, I'm standing, I was a part of that conversation.
We're just, we're just giving them that position.
But you can't do that.
And that position includes an increase in pay, I realize that, but, but he's not being promoted to that position.
Right, I think maybe you should discuss it in the executive session, because you're going to need- Right, I think maybe you should discuss it in executive session because you're going to need the attorney's, um, opinion on that.
Put it up for executive session, I guess, next week.
And Sean's abstaining in Altonville, so you're going to need to show the other three board members.
All right, what do we have left? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I want to, that's right, and I want to make a motion that we close the town board board session and go into executive session for, uh, litigation with the water district and personnel, water department and, uh, may, uh, someone else, uh, sue us.
A second, if you're all in favor, bye.